Our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call the Human Service Committee meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
Commissioner Samasko is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one home, indivisible, with due diligence.
This time, is there any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. Do we have any updates?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, is there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I would move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and I did the citizen, so we'll go to number five, conceptual initiatives. Do we have any conceptual initiatives? Any old business? Move on to new business. The first one, 7A, Veterans Affairs Board Appointment.
I would make the motion as presented.
Board? Okay, Kevin Jones, the vacancy for the member of the Gulf War here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed.
Just, Mr. Chair, he's got quite a resume, doesn't he? We're very fortunate to have someone like that working and representing our veterans.
Okay, we'll move on to 7B. Health Department, agreement with the Downriver Community Services, Planning Services. You all seeing the contract?
I would make the motion.
Board? Do we need to have a roll call on this?
We're just moving on to full board, so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Do we have any other human service matters at this time? None? Information only. Can I have a motion to receive and file packets? So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Yes, sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn.
Actually, can we jump over to the Environmental Public Works if you don't mind, just because we've got our landfill guys here and they come from a long ways.
Also, don't delete arrival if you would. I made it. For the record, just note that I made it.
I did.
Okay.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, Environmental Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Certainly. Commissioner Samasko.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
At this time, do we have any additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Support?
Moved by Commissioner Greitop, supported by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. We have an agenda. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none, we have a couple of updates. The first one is for the St. Clair County Storm Water Permit, and I don't see Christian O'Reilly here.
Oliver's not here. I believe we have an update in the packet.
Okay.
I do have a question about that when it's appropriate.
Doctor, do you think you could?
I'd make the motion.
Greg? Do you want to?
Do you want to make a motion and open it up, or do you want to just do the question?
Sure, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Board? All in favor say aye.
No, 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 Carol's got questions.
Oh, okay.
Forgive me, I'm the rookie here on the board, and I'm new to all this, and I was very interested to read your report, and it talks about the beach closures, and there was something like 78, 76 days of closure in 2011, 2012, and there were three beaches that consisted of 58 of those. One was the one at the end of Holland Road, one was at Lakeside Park, and one was at Chrysler in Marysville, Chrysler Beach in Marysville. And in this report, it talks about the efforts that have been made to decrease the pollution at the Chrysler site. I was wondering what's being done about the lakeside and Holland Road problems.
I can speak in generalities to that. Our environmental health director would probably be better to that, but I did serve in that position for a little while, and those two beaches do not have a long history of issues, and there are anomalies depending on weather conditions and different things of that nature that... We do sample upstream from these, and we've done some illicit discharge connection surveys upstream from these beaches, and those numbers are not typical for those two beaches. So at this point, there's not anything else being done. If we get numbers that are similar as we go this year, then it's probably going to warrant further investigation, but they don't have a history. Chrysler really does have a history of issues over the years. Sampling's only one point in time.
So this program's going to continue in subsequent years?
Yes.
Okay, that answers my concern. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Greg? I do have just one question in regards to the storm water permit. This is a mandated federal requirement?
Correct.
Do we get funding for that, and if so, how much?
We do not get any funding for that.
No funding?
Zero. And Kristen is here.
Kristen just walked in already.
We were just talking about you. Anyway, we do not get any funding.
No, the storm water activities we do are funded by the county appropriations.
Okay, so local?
Well, some... And Kristen could probably speak better than this, but we have instituted some fees for some of the school districts and other applicants who are embedded in our permit, but they are very minimal compared to the price of the program. So it's still basically unfunded from the federal or the state level.
Okay. Any other questions? None, thank you.
You're welcome.
We now have a update from the Landfill Engineering Services. I see Matt here. Jim, you're going to?
Bob.
Bob. You're Jim.
(laughing).
Jim, Bob, there you go.
Our job previously had received a memo with a spreadsheet. Matt is providing you with the revised memo and spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just a quick little history lesson for some of the new commissioners. Jim and Bob are our landfill consultants that we hired some time ago to take a look at our operations from A to Z, and Bob is the engineering guy, I guess for better lack of choice of words. Jim's kind of the business side of it, and we've broken down a lot of different facets that we do out at the landfill to literally go through everything, and hence, this is the engineering piece.
Correct. One of the functions that we're trying to do is make sure that all of the expenses, all of the engineering activities that are being done out at Smiths Creek are being done as efficiently as possible. One of the things that... It had been about five years since the engineering, the general engineering contract had been looked at in terms of pricing. So one of the things that I did was contacted five other highly experienced, very reputable engineering companies in this area that specialize in solid waste activities. And what I did is I asked them to provide me with their hourly rates for a variety of positions that they would have, and similar positions to what current CTI contract has. The spreadsheet provides all that information laid out for you. In evaluating contracts like this, you need to look more than just at hourly rates because there are so many different positions within a company, but it really boils down to, as you can see here, we've got like seven main categories of staffing that's used. And what Matt did with the help of CTI is provided a breakdown of the percentage of billable hours that they see throughout the years. Which level do they consist of? So what we've done is we've provided a weighted average to compare the five different companies to your current contractor, CTI. You'll see the total weighted composite rate down at the bottom provides that individual hourly rate at that percent of usage. So you'll see certain companies have lower hourly rates for certain categories in CTI, and CTIs are lower than others. What you really need to look at is the composite weighted average to really compare what's going on. What we did is we used CTI's 2012 rates as our comparison, and if you've seen the previous memo, there was an oversight, and the rates that were marked for CTIs weren't the current 2012 rates, and so that's where the update is. The bottom line really had changed very little with that comparison. But what you'll see is CTI's rates as our baseline, 100%. There's really only one other contractor, one other engineering company out there that was really even close. That was Cornerstone. As you can see, they're within about a percent, about a percent lower than what CTI's rates are. All right, so we've sort of taken a look at, you've got CTI, Cornerstone's rates pretty comparable, but we went in a little bit further to see, because each engineering company, not only the hourly rates, but there's also additional charges that they will provide. CTI has a 2.5% charge that is tacked on to each of the bills to cover what they consider communications, ancillary stuff, phone calls, copying, photocopying, if you're making large sets of plans, documents like that, and they just tack that on to the hourly rates. They also have a pass-through charge if they have any kind of subcontract work done through them. So what we did to make sure that CTI's rates are comparable and favorable, we asked Cornerstone to provide us with those same kind of numbers. And as you can see in here, Cornerstone has a 3% rate and a 15% pass-through rate. So while they may appear cheaper initially at 99.1%, very close, with their additional charges, they're basically going to be a wash. So what this, to me, shows is that CTI, your current contractor, current engineering company, has been giving St. Clair County some very favorable rates. If you look at the other companies, 20, 25% higher than what you're currently paying with CTI. And you get the benefit of having CTI with the experience that they have at your facility. If you continue to operate the bioreactor landfill, none of these other engineering firms have the experience in the bioreactors that CTI does. I mean, your facility is the facility in Michigan that is operating at this level. And so after reviewing the costs, after reviewing the work that they've done, it's basically my recommendation that, once CTI has been providing you with very good service at a reasonable rate, it'd be my recommendation that you sit down, or Matt sit down now, the county sit down with CTI, and try and renegotiate an extension on the contract. I guess with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Rushing?
I didn't understand completely when I first had it, but I think he explained it pretty well. You use CTI as the benchmark, and your percentage is on the right-hand column. That's the actual hours that are used. And you use those same percentages across the board to come up with the rate?
Correct.
And that's how you came up with the dollar amount and the average. So like at the $127 rate for a principal engineer, they're using up 23.26% of the time?
Correct.
And you just... Okay, so you got?
Correct. So you've got the composite weighted average of 116.73 for MCI, 115 for Golda. That is their hourly rates based on the percentage.
Because of that not being weighted, then you could say, well, who's had what hours?
Correct. Because if you were just going on a straight average, you might find somebody that's lower because of particular categories. You really need to look at what do you utilize the most, and that's where the weighted average comes in.
Any other questions for Bob? Seeing none? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to, at this point, direct Matt to continue with negotiations?
Can I give you a...
Sure.
What, remember when this project began with Mr. Loggston and Mr. Rates? One of the things we were looking at was our contract with all of our vendors, all of our consultants, those that operate, run the operational aspects of the landfill. This is one of, probably one of the final projects that they'll be involved with in analyzing some of our costs for operations. There has been some concern expressed in the past about CTI's rates. I've even expressed some of those concerns myself. So it was good to see this information come back. I think they've done an excellent job, and the next step, absent any objections from the board, would be for Mr. Rates and members of administration to begin meeting with CTI and start hammering out a new agreement with them. We'd be looking at likely a three-year contract. Most of the contracts that we're negotiating now are three-year contracts with two options for extensions, one-year options each. So that's the step we'll be taking next, and absent any concerns that you may express, the next time that you see Mr. Rates here will probably be to deliver his recommendation on a new contract.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Welcome.
Thank you. Any conceptual initiatives? None? No old business, a new business? The 2012 Survey Remonumentation Completion Report.
Chairman, I would move that we send this on to the full board.
Second? Okay, request is for $43,251.60. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Smiths Creek Landfill Activities Report. We have Matt here, if you have any questions regarding the activities report.
Send this on to the full board, too?
No. No, that's just there for information.
All right. Thank you.
Information only. Again, it's a little bit like the activities report. Oh, any other environmental or public works matters that need to come before this committee? Seeing none, we'll go on to information only. The City of Yale Bond Redemption, Neighborhood Stabilization Program Update. I think we're going to meet the number there, be it 50% of that money spent, so. I know there was a little warning issued that we were three percentage points low, so. And then the Park and Rec Commission Meeting Schedule. You'll note that they moved that to Wednesday night, so commissioners that would like to attend can be there, and it doesn't conflict with any possible date we have, except for those commissioners playing golf. Road Commission and DPW officers were noted there. At this time, I would entertain a motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Board?
Second? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
I'd like to call the, excuse me, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Clerk, take the role, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Samasko.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Any additions or deletions to the agenda, anybody? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support?
Motion support. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Citizens to address the board tonight. Artie Bryson from Clay Township, the supervisor, is here to address the board on a dispatch letter. Artie, you are the first person that is going to have the new digital clock working for you. See that big three?
Oh, goodness!
So you know how long...
I feel pressure.
You can talk all you want until that thing says triple zeros, and then you're done.
Well, you can't start it right away. Oh, darn. Anyhow, I'm addressing the board tonight. I sent a letter requesting 6% of the revenues that go to your St. Clair County Dispatch be diverted to our dispatch. Basically, I'll just give you a little history of our, or talk about our dispatch real quick. When I first took office, I thought, you know what? It'd be so easy to get rid of our dispatch, turn it over to the county, save some money, and it wasn't very long at all. I was there about a week. I realized it would be doing a great disservice to my community, the citizens there. Our dispatch down there, believe it or not, fields over 10,000 phone calls a year, and I've ran some call centers before. That's nothing to sneeze at. We're open 24 hours a day, and that's a great value for us. If anybody in our community needs help, they can come and open that door and find a friendly face. If it's 3:00 in the morning, it doesn't matter. Without that dispatch being there, they'd have to drive over 30 miles north or west to find someone that could help them out in person. Technically speaking, I believe our dispatch is at the cutting edge. We have, I believe, about the best mapping and tracking software. We have the video streaming from the cars back into our dispatch. I venture to argue that we're at the state of the art and cutting edge as far as our technology and our dispatch. And another great knowledge, or benefit we have is our dispatchers themselves... Got 105 left. God. Is the local knowledge that they have there, and I mean, you guys know our area down there with all the waterways and the islands and stuff. We have 350 homes that you can't drive a car to. We have three streets in our township named St. Clair. And if that was being handled from someone up here, lots of confusion. If you get a call on the Baltimore Highway, the only way to get there is by boat, and the local knowledge at our dispatch are great. One big thing, I was in the dispatch myself about a week and a half ago, and someone walked in and gave us a tip. He said, "There's this house, they're selling heroin, and three of my good friends are messed up from buying the drugs there, and you need to do something about it." The address he gave us was an Algonac address, and I venture to say if we told him, you know, "Go there and dial the 911," I mean, it wouldn't have happened unless they could have walked in and actually talked to a human being there. And to me, you can't put a price on that. I'd just like to close. I think if our dispatch was not there, the amount of calls that we handle and everything to increase the capacity at the St. Clair County Dispatch, it would probably cost more than the 6% of the funds that we're requesting. And I just think it's a fair thing, and it provides value to our community, is our dispatch. I'm a big fan of it. I'll leave you with one last thing, too. I've heard, I'm not sure if you guys are going to be in contract or contacting LaPierre County to be your, the backup of your dispatch up here. I believe now, are Clay Township's the backup?
It's been told to us, but I'd probably beg to differ with you on that.
Okay.
When we get to the letter, we can have some open discuss... We'll bring you back up here, and we can exchange.
Okay. But I would like to see if that's the case. I mean, I would like to continue Clay to be your backup, and you can be still backup for LaPierre if that's needed. I just think we need to work closely together, and, you know, and the people that are in this field, there's a lot of alpha dogs out there, and egos, and the butt heads, and I think as policymakers, we just have to learn to work a lot closer together. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Artie. Appreciate you coming up here and addressing us.
Yeah, we've got 7B in the section. When we talk about the letter, we'll open it up, and if there's questions pointed to you, then we can, you know, question-answer stuff.
Okay. Any more citizens wishing to address? Chuck, when you're done addressing, you need to fill out a paper and a card, and I'm just dropping off here when you're done.
My name is Charles Miller. I am a trustee with the Clay Township Board, and I'm here with Supervisor Bryson, but I'd like to make some comments, just a little bit different than where he was coming from. Recently, in our township, we encountered a situation which we look at as an emergency, and that was that our local ferry transportation between the north part of our township and the south part of our township was disrupted because of ice. The normal process that we were operating under up until that point was a, an announcement would be made by the ferry operator to the dispatch at Clay Township. Clay Township then would turn it over to the select alert system here at St. Clair County, and the people who were participants in the select alert would get the notifications either by email or by telephone that the ferry was not running or whatever. Now, that is an emergency response system, and we became very, very reliant... Now, that is an emergency response system and we became very, very reliant on that system down there in the south end because it was extremely valuable to getting to our citizens. This time, the dispatch was notified, dispatch called St. Clair County and they were told, "Select alert doesn't exist anymore. It doesn't work." Yeah, that's what we got, too, silence. The situation that we are faced with in Clay Township is one that requires a very robust communication system. We are now forced to build our own emergency response notification system at the township level. Now, why am I mentioning that in a discussion with backup for Clay Township to work with you folks? We're used to it. We're probably as close to emergency response requirements in the communication area as any of you. And we do it a lot for various reasons. So I would ask that you consider Mr. Bryson's petition in light of the fact that we are probably closer to the real issue and probably as well, if not better, prepared to provide that kind of continuing backup service. And I guess at 102, I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Anybody else wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee? Hearing none, let's move on to updates. Are there any updates from any of the commissioners? Any conceptual initiatives? Seeing none. No old business, let's move on to new business. Item A is a proclamation for Tim Boyle for his years of service and this is for final action. I believe that he has his retirement party Saturday night, this Saturday night, so.
I move that we approve the proclamation.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion to support, any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor of sending this on to the, I'm sorry, all in favor of making this for final action?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just a question, Mr. Chair. Are you going to be there to present this proclamation?
No, they have somebody else that is already lined up to take care of it.
Okay, yes.
Thank you for asking. I did ask that question, so, thank you. 7B, Clay Township Letter Regarding Dispatch Funding. Every commissioner does have a copy of it. It came to you in your packet and it was the one that Mr. Bryson was addressing wherein they were requesting some funds for support of their dispatch down there. So we will open this up for discussion or motions or whatever anybody would like to do. Carl?
There's somebody has, I have a motion, but if somebody has some discussion.
Well, just to, I guess to address the backup issue, the backup issue was discussed at the last Central Dispatch meeting, which Bill, you were at that meeting. Bill Kaufman was there and collectively a whole bunch of other individuals. And Clay Township's represented, Don Drake's part of that, and then actually the city. We had a lot of discussion regarding the actual backup center report here in this quote-unquote "our backup center" technically, but it's never serviced, it's never manned. We do spend $11,000 or $14,000 a year to maintain that. Our dispatch center has not been down. If you talk to Tim Congar, our dispatch director, the system hasn't been down in 19 years. And I think discussing it, if our system did go down, that A, Clay Township wouldn't be able to handle the volume of calls that would go in, the rest of the 94 percent, you know, countywide. So we had looked at Macomb, Cerisa, which is another dispatch center, and actually LaPierre, as having a, you know, them back us up and vice versa. And it was collectively decided by the group as a whole that LaPierre would accommodate us for backup, very similar systems, very similar size, so on and so forth. And to be quite honest, Clay Township wasn't even discussed as a backup. And I think when you talked to a lot of the other individuals in there, they had different reasons that they felt that they couldn't accommodate that. So that's to really speak on the backup piece of it. And, and I know the Clay, you ultimately can do as you so choose down there, but I guess when I take a look, I guess, at the 30,000 mile picture, and this is just me talking out loud, is you really are the only one that has their own dispatch. I mean, Marysville, City Port here and to all the other municipalities, townships do rely on our Central Dispatch to, you know, dispatch and so, you know, and do it. And so, I wouldn't be in support of sending additional funds to Clay. That's just me talking.
I, I live in Clay Township and I've been into that center many, many times. I've taken the tour of it and Mr. Bryson is pretty accurate when he says that it's cutting-edge, state-of-the-art stuff. They really do have some good equipment. And the citizens of Clay Township are very well taken care of when it comes to dispatching. I understand everything they are talking about. It is a very good dispatch center. They spend about $400,000 a year to have that. The citizens pay for that out of a millage and they've so chosen to do so and I believe that they are happy with it. Commissioner?
Just a question, maybe Mr. Kaufman could address it. If they were to do away with their, their dispatch center, we would obviously have to assume that responsibility. So then we would get the, the funding from the devices, 42 cents?
The surcharges.
And that, that surcharge would go to us then, instead of to Clay Township.
Correct.
It's in your memo, Howard, it's $20,000.
Twenty, 20,000?
20,000.
So they would have a net savings of almost $400,000. I think it would be a pretty easy decision if I were on board at Clay Township as to what I would recommend that they do, and that is to tip it over to the county and take the $400,000 and put more police officers on or something like that. That would just be my take and beef up fire and police services. That's just my, my take on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushing?
Well, I'll keep your name.
Chuck? Chuck Miller.
Yeah, and you guys have your own specifics and it sounds like you have reasons why you do what you do. So I don't want to dish merit or whatever as far as the need to your citizens. It's very important what you brought up and it's a service that you give. That can't be given by the counties on an equal basis in the knowledge and the emergency service that you provide on the barges and the ferries there. That's consideration they have to take off. But they do have the option to come to the county and potentially save money, but evidently they determine that that value is more important. And the millage, I read through all the paperwork here, but I imagine it's your option, your millage was written in, or your ordinance was written in July 1969 and I read through the whole thing, but nowhere in there does it state any funds to be used for dispatch. Now, that's a function of the police service, but I guess you, the board over the years just determined that the monies that you'd be collecting from your millage would include dispatch service.
That is correct. Yes. Any other comments?
I have a motion.
Commissioner Tomian?
In our packet, we have a recommendation from our administrator that we not divert funds for this purpose, so I'm going to move that we receive and file this communication.
I would second that.
I have a motion to receive and file this information and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming up here and addressing us. 7C, Central Dispatch Advisory Board Reappointment.
I'd make the motion as written, present it.
Support. Okay, I have a motion to support for reappointment to the Central Dispatch Advisory Board. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will go to the full board in two weeks. 7D, 2012 Post-Security Grant Program Award. You have it in your packet there. This, we're looking at about $223,000 and it will be used for the boat and tow vehicle and radios and equipment and some wages. It is, there is a local match in the amount of $55,776, $2,147 of which will be in the form of cash and the balance will be in-kind service provided after this grant is in place and the boat is up and running. Lieutenant Denny Maury is in the audience right now from the Marine Division. If somebody has any questions or if there is a motion.
Make a motion to send it to the full board.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a support to send this on to the full board. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, Denny, start spending your money. In two weeks. In two weeks. Thank you for coming. Are there any other judiciary and public safety matters? Hearing none. Information only, I don't see anything.
I would move that we receive and file packets pertaining to judicial and public safety matters.
Support. Motion to support, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm open for a meeting, I mean, adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Report. Motion to support to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Ways and Means Committee to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Samasko.
Here.
Commissioner Tomian.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Riley is absent. Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Greitop.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, we'll move on to additions, deletions and changes to the agenda. Do we have any? Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. Do we have any updates? We'll move on to conceptual initiatives, do we have any? Okay, move on to number six, old business. A, review of Resolution 1247, amendments to the retirement ordinance. Yes, Mr. Greitop?
I just wanted to start off with this motion, or this came to me from a constituent employee and questioned parts of Resolution 12-47 in particular, Article I, Section F, under final average compensation. Had some questions, I had to go get some information. I went back with answers, had more questions, went back with more answers and then chased it down a little bit further and talked to all of the commissioners regarding this and there were some questions that came up, so we are going to take a look at it. And I think Gary has something that you want to say to us about this. You've done some research on it?
Well, I was asked to be ready to report on this because unfortunately, I wasn't here the night that it passed. The reason I wasn't is because it's a full board meeting, so I wouldn't have been here anyways and I wasn't in town if somebody had asked me to be here. And basically, the history of this is Mr. Samasko contacted me sometime, I don't know when it was, last year, say, late summer, summertime type thing. And what he was concerned about is he had worked as an employee in the prosecutor's office and the way our ordinance was written, for purposes of calculating final average compensation, his years on the board would count, which meant he would be essentially trading years where he was compensated as a full-time employee for years where he's an elected official and not an employee at a much lower rate. And what his concern was, was that appropriate. It didn't seem fair to him and in effect, sometime later this year would have forced him off the board and he wanted to know if that's the way it was because then he would have to make a decision that was best for he and his family, which would probably involve leaving the board. And I want to say, he had no way tried to suggest what, what he thought the answer would be. He had researched it to try to, in effect, lobby me and he had no way pressured me to make any kind of a decision or even to get into it. So I called Mr. Bohm, explained the situation, because obviously I don't just start hauling off and doing things, and he said, sounded like it merited at least looking into because it didn't sound right. So the next thing I did is called Tammy in the, who does our pension benefits, Tammy Rumsey, and she's very, very, very knowledgeable in this stuff. And what she did is said she would get some information and send it to me, which she did. And she actually kind of led me to where I needed to go and I've provided you a copy of the enabling ordinance in the language she highlighted, and the highlighting is hers, not mine. And the enabling ordinance is the ordinance under which this board is authorized to establish a pension plan and it has a definition of final average compensation, which you can read it yourself and you all, or most of you probably already have. But what it says is the average annual, or final average, or average final compensation means the annual average of the highest actual compensation received by an employee that excludes other than a judge's position during a period of five consecutive years of service contained within the employee's tenures of service immediately before the employee's retirement. And that's kind of how I always understood it. I understood final average compensation was the average of what you earned as an employee. So what I did is I called Tammy back and I said, you know, I read this and I think the way our ordinance reads, because it counted service as an elected county commissioner versus that as an employee. And, and a county commissioner is not an employee. They're not hired by the county, they're not fired by the county, their work is not controlled, their hours is not controlled by the county board or the administrator or anybody else. They are an independent legislative body, that's what all of you are, and clearly not an employee. So I asked her what she thought. I said, that was how I read it and she said she agreed, that Mr. Samasko is not an employee of the county, so counting these years actually conflicted with the enabling law that defines final average compensation. Based upon that, I again, I talked to Mr. Bohm again, I talked to Mr. Kaufman and then proceeded to make an amendment to the ordinance to bring us into compliance with the law. And what that would mean is Mr. Samasko, and the other thing, and there are two independent things going on here. One is if somebody qualifies under the defined benefit plan for the county, while they're here as a commissioner, they accrue years of service. That has nothing to do with the definition of final average compensation. The two are totally independent of each other. And so what we did is, and I worked with Tammy doing it, and I wrote a change to the definition, she tweaked it, it was sent to Mr. Samasko, he revised it further and honestly, I got somewhat lost in the changes that went back and forth, but I reviewed it with Tammy and the suggestions Mr. Samasko made, made no substantive difference in the outcome of what she and I had done. And somebody raised a couple issues. Number one is, how would this benefit Mr. Samasko by staying? Well, obviously, first of all, the years that are supposed to be counted for final average salary would be the ones that are going to be counted per the law. Secondly, by not having to leave mid-year, I guess it would be this year in the fall, he could finish his term. And what that means is he's continuing to accrue years, as I just said a few minutes ago, and that would enable him to get to 25 years as a county employee, which enables him to retire at age 60 versus age 65. But again, that was going on independently regardless of what this decision was.
Excuse me, Gary, did you say 60 rather than 65 or 55?
55, excuse me, rather than.
55 rather than 60?
60, excuse me, I misspoke on that. The other issue that a couple people raised is there was a belief out there that this somehow would impact his multiplier. And what the multiplier is, is final average salary, which we talked about, times the multiplier, times years of service, that determines your pension. And there were a couple instances where people got, there's an election that somebody could make, this goes back years. We call it the original plan and the modified plan. And if you wanted to elect the original plan, then what you had is retiree healthcare earlier and after, I think it was eight years of service, and a 2 percent multiplier, or you had to work 20 years to get the healthcare and you could get a higher multiplier that went up to 2.4 percent. And there was some apparently thought out there that somehow if Mr. Samasko had selected the lower multiplier, that this would enable him now to go up to the higher one. And that's, two things involved. Number one is he did elect the lower multiplier and under your ordinance, that is the multiplier he stuck with. So he gets the 2 percent, this will in no way impact the 2 percent. And then one last thing I wanted to say is that if Mr. Samasko elects to retire when he gets to the 25 and can retire at age when he gets to the 25 and can retire at age 55, um, he will have to leave the board. There was some idea that this was, you know, somehow being done so he could stay on the board. He still has to leave, um, because there has to be a break in service of two years off the board before, um, once he starts collecting, uh, a pension from the county. And then what the ordinance provides is, then after two years, if he wanted to run again, he could run again. So that's the bottom line. It, all this did is bring us into compliance with the law. It, and if this had been some other way, but let's say we had the discretion to modify it, but we didn't have to, it could, was an either-or, we could count years of service as an employee, or some other, you know, like, as an elected county commissioner, then I would have been back to the board saying, this is a matter of discretion for you, it's not me to, for me to decide. But this was strictly to bring us into compliance with the law. And whether it was Mr. Samasko or anybody else, my answer would have been the same. And once again, and, and I want to, and I can't emphasize this enough, he never lobbied me to come to any particular answer, uh, he, you know, Mr. Samasko made it clear, whatever the answer was, he was prepared to accept it. He just wanted to know for sure that it was right the way it was, because he had an important decision to make in terms of leaving the board earlier than he otherwise might have. And, um, so that's the bottom line. That, I think the thing that is unfortunate is it got put on the final agenda, um, of the year, and versus going through what we're here tonight, because if it had gone through committee, then you would have asked, and I would have given you this explanation, and all these questions wouldn't have come up. So, and it unfortunately just isn't the way it happened. And the other thing I would say is, at the end of every year, um, not every year, but quite often at the end of the year, we have kind of a mop-up resolution where we make amendments to the pension ordinance to bring, come into compliance with IRS requirements and things of that nature. Sometimes there'll be three or four or five amendments. I think in this one, there were, you know, three or four, half a dozen, whatever they were. Uh, some of them were IRS stuff, one was this issue, but other things. So, um, the unfortunate part is, again, I wa, it didn't go through the committee, so I wasn't here to explain it, and then apparently, it didn't get focused on at that last meeting, and if it had, there was nobody here, I think, that could really explain it anyways.
We did have like 50 things on that last agenda, as far as mop-up. Because I wasn't too major.
Okay, well, we'll work our way down, Howard.
Uh, just for clarification, uh, the definition cited tonight, uh, that you're talking about in Public Act, uh, 158, that's from the state of Michigan, in terms of definitions for what it means for average final compensation.
156.
The second question I have is, uh, for retirement benefits, then, commissioners would be considered under the classification of employee?
Now, we, the, the, uh, commissioners can, uh, receive a retirement benefit as a commissioner. Um, the, if you were vested in the plan, the plan allows you to do that. Uh, the question was whether Mr. Samasko should have the option to count his years as an employee, obviously, which the act gives him the option of doing. Um, the, the plan, and that's another issue that came up, somebody said, well, the, the date, January 1, 2009, was put in this amendment, so somebody, I think people thought that was somehow designed to permit Mr. Samasko to increase his multiplier. And the reason that date was put in there was because that's the date the plan was closed. So what we wouldn't want to do is inadvertently let this apply to somebody to get back into the plan that was closed, so it could only apply to somebody who was in the plan before it was closed. Exactly.
Okay. Steve?
Carl, do you want to go first, or?
Go ahead.
A couple things I wanted to just place on the record. I became aware that there was an issue, um, a couple weeks ago, and I wanted people to know, or at least make a record of the fact of what had occurred. I first raised this issue in probably 2010, because I didn't know, we have an original plan, we have a modified plan, we have, um, Resolution 916, which was some of the plan changes. We had the, a couple versions of the employee handbook, and a lot of these provisions, I was unclear how I would be treated. So, when my initial concern was, am I the best five out of 10? And I was told, and I've communicated and documented, I was told that, no, you are the three out of 10. So instead of it being an issue in my fifth year, it was, it would be an issue in my seventh year. Is it fine? Well, 2013 would be my seventh year, and then, there's always the possibility I wouldn't get reelected. So I didn't really look at that as an issue until the election took place. But I did, as Gary said, um, raise it officially with Corporation Counsel and HR about the time Gary said, but originally, I had talked to, actually, Sean about it, and then I talked to, uh, our administrator about it, and until it was an issue, I would, didn't think it was, it was a moot point. But knowing that I was likely to be elected, uh, this last term, I did start looking at it. I did ask that it be completed prior to taking oath of office this year. I wanted to make, I wanted to know what my options were and what I had to, you know, look at. Very, very important to my wife, very important to my family, very important to me, very important to everyone with a pension, I'm sure. So, in any regard, there was communication, and Gary's right, I, I went, I didn't know quite how to approach it. I did not approach my fellow commissioners, I approached our administrator. I thought that was the proper thing to do. He probably confirmed that. He talked to Jeff or to Gary, and it was referred to Corporation Counsel. And then Gary communicated with me with some language. I looked at the language, I said, well, this could be an issue, or that could be an issue, and directly communicated with, uh, Tammy Rumsey to some degree. But again, Tammy and Terry finally approved this language, and it was actually a pretty beneficial exchange with Tammy, because some of her concerns, I had not thought of, and some of my concerns, she'd not thought of, meant together, they came up with language, I thought the two sentences were fine. The issue of a 2% multiplier, quite frankly, I knew that I had, I had signed an election, um, May 21 of 1992, as an assistant prosecutor, says irrevocable and unchangeable regardless of any circumstance. I was a 2% multiplier in the original plan. I assumed unchangeable, irrevocable meant that. I never thought there was an issue with a 2% multiplier, but that kind of shows you the, what can happen with different languages and plan revisions and plan, uh, booklets. And what Tammy was looking, a lot of times, was at the employee handbook in, in place at that time, the employee handbook now, these different provisions, but I just needed to get a handle. And I was at all times, and tonight including, willing to make whatever decision I have to make regarding my service here, but I would like to continue to serve. I didn't think it was really, uh, a policy, a good public policy to, to have that force me off the board, you know, in the nature that it would, so I'm glad that they looked at it. I, too, was told that it was a mop-up type of a provision. I know that we do these, uh, revisions to housekeeping matters, uh, in December. I know we've handled them before relative to the pension plan. I was told that's probably the best place to, to do that. I didn't give it a second thought. But I do know that language was approved on December 5th, and was done well in advance to get it in. Why it didn't get in, or it was added on the floor, and, but the, many times, the appearance of impropriety is sufficient to cause bad feelings, and some things didn't look quite right, so people ask questions. So I really welcome the fact that you look at it. If there's anything changed, I suggested, had we thought of this 2% versus 4% thing, we could have added three words, not to exceed 2% to that ordinance revision. It just, I never thought about it, Gary's, you know, it just wasn't, wasn't looked at, but it was not an intention to increase the multiplier, because that certainly would be something people would, would think was inappropriate. Uh, as far as whether I'm an employee or not an employee, I get an employee handbook, employee card, employee number, I get a W2 that says employee. People ask, where do I work? I say, I work for St. Clair County. I don't know, but maybe I'm not an employee, and like Howard says, are we employees or not? For one purpose, you're this, for one purpose, you're that. What are you for the retirement plan? It can get rather complicated, but my, I'm satisfied that that resolution would allow me to continue to serve without eroding my, uh, commission, or my, my pension based on my years of employment. That was my goal. I did it in the most forthwith and straightforward fashion I could. I didn't get a billboard and put it out publicly, but I certainly didn't do it in any kind of fashion that was meant to disturb anybody or cause any problems. I tried to go through the proper channels, and I do appreciate the fact that the board looked at that, and I appreciate the fact the board, uh, made the decision that it made. So, I guess, the other thing I'd like to say is, I'm very approachable if anyone has any questions. It was, uh, I find out, weeks after it happened, there's a lot of rumors, a lot of things being said, and things being presumed that weren't true, a lot of misinformation. Had someone talked to me, or someone closer to it about it, maybe they would have learned, you know, some better information, and maybe it would have changed their approach to it. But in any regard, that's the information I have on it, and I just wanted to clear the record on that, so.
Can I add two things? May I? Sure. The employee question, uh, there is no doubt you are not employees. Uh, there is a common law definition of an employee, there's an IRS definition of employee, you don't meet either one of them. I don't care what can book, what card, whatever you're given.
I'm just saying, if you're having to say.
I just ta, I just want to, I, it's not that I didn't look at that issue, I looked at the definition of an employee. The second question that you may ask, because Steve mentioned the three years, is, if the Enabling Law says five, why does the amendment say three? And the reason for that is, is that what the law says is, that a collective bargaining agreement trumps our statute, uh, or our ordinance. So what that means is, if, and, and our ordinance recognizes that in another section, is if an employee was employed under a collective bargaining agreement that has a provision like this, where it's three years instead of five, and almost all of ours are three, highest three of the last five, then that supersedes our ordinance, and that was decided by the Michigan Supreme Court in the Detroit firefighters case. So that's why it says three versus the five that's in the statute.
Gary, does this ordinance affect anybody else?
It does not, but it could. It doesn't mean that it, that somebody else couldn't end up in similar circumstances somewhere down the road. Um, I, I think it, I can't, well, I can think of people who are in the old plan, who are in some other position at the county, uh, who could, after they retire, run, uh, for, for this office. I could rattle off some names. That doesn't mean they're going to do it, but it, it, there are people it could be covered.
Well, um, I think there has been a lot of misinformation about this, and, and that's unfortunate. But first of all, um, I had people, um, county employees who felt that, in reading the language, not attending the meeting, or having any sort of explanation, that Steve was getting some sort of special benefit. And, um, I know, I wasn't on the board at the time, and I know you were in a rush, but you, you, uh, you have a rule that, if you had followed, might have limited that kind of, of controversy. It says, whenever a question is put by the chair, every commissioner present shall vote on the question, and no member shall abstain from voting yes or no unless excused by a majority of the commission. And I think if, if, would have been pointed out, and Steve wanted to abstain because this benefited him uniquely, and the commission voted to excuse him, I think a lot of these, I think a lot of these problems would, would not have occurred. You know, it caused a lot of unnecessary, uh, rumors, et cetera. And, uh, I'm, I'm really glad to hear that the whole issue of whether the multiplier went up or not has, has been resolved. But what, what's unique to me about this situation, and this is not Steve's fault, that you can work in the county as a full-time employee, and let's say that, in Steve's case, you had a salary of average compensation 84, 85,000 dollars, and you can leave full-time employment, and then you can come on this board of commissioners, and you can work part-time as a commissioner, and instead of having your pension, that portion of your service based upon your commissioner pay, it ends up being based upon your salary as a full-time employee. Now, that's something that was in place before, and, uh, Steve and this ordinance really didn't have anything to do with that, but I'm, I'm concerned about that individually. I don't, you know, when I heard about this, I, I, I felt that, uh, perhaps there was some sort of conflict, and I don't think that Steve's, the benefits that Steve has earned as a full-time employee should be eroded at all, and if that was the intent of the ordinance, I think that's fine. But one of the things that's happening is, and correct me if I'm wrong, by adopting this ordinance, Steve continues to, to have his pension as a county commissioner calculated, it's still 2%, but it's times 84 or 85,000 dollars instead of 17,000 dollars. And to me, you know, that, that, that doesn't make sense. And, uh, uh, I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with pension plans, but all the pension plans that I've worked with have been statewide plans, whether they were for cities, or for schools, or something like that, and I, I haven't really worked in a system where the employer has their own plan, and we as a commission can change the benefit configuration. So, my question is, could this ordinance be amended so that all of Steve's, um, pension benefits that he's accrued to date can be maintained, but the basis going forward can be changed from using his salary as a full-time employee to using his salary as a part-time employee?
I guess, if I could address it, what I would have done with the election was this. Under the plan, as I understood it, if I had to leave the board, I would have done so, but I would have had what you think would not have been appropriate. I mean, I would, I would leave in November this year, take my 2%, you know, I would take what I had. It doesn't do me, it doesn't, it doesn't benefit me to, say, modify a plan and make that kind of restriction. I would just leave in November this year and take what I had, and take my 2% times the 24-year service or whatever, and, and be on my way. But you're saying, can it be modified? I'm sure it probably could be modified, but that wasn't the point of what I was trying to accomplish. I mean, and I would find it disagreeable to say, well, we're going to carve out that piece of it and reduce it in that fashion, because when I ran for this office, and what was in place when I ran, was not that.
Well, what, 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 what's in place when you ran is what we're, we, we just amended. If we left in place what was there when you ran.
If you leave it like it was, then I'd leave November this year, that's fine, that's the question.
Yeah, that's, that's not why I'm raising the question. I don't want to see you leave the board, and I think it would be tremendously unfair for you to work as a full-time employee and, and have a, have a deferred pension and have that eroded. But the question is, to me, is, should he continue, as a part-time employee, to continue to have his final average compensation based on service? It's not a multiplier, the multiplier stays the same.
Our legal counsel already told us, he is not an employee.
He's not a part-time employee.
And I also say I'm not part-time. 24 hours a day, I don't care if I should be home with my family having dinner, if I'm out someplace with your, peoples tend to think you're part-time.
Well, part-time, full-time is not relevant. And the, the issue is, statute says that the, the years of compensation to be counted are those when he was an employee of the county. And he is not an employee of the county, so it had nothing to do with whether he keeps, he stays here as a commissioner or not. The question was coming into compliance with that definition. And I think frankly, you try to amend it to go back the other way, you violated the Enabling Statute.
So, the answer to my question is, no, we can't do it.
Exactly, that's what I just said. No. That's my opinion is no.
Because, um.
Because it has nothing to do, in my opinion, whether Steve decides to run again, he doesn't want to run again, he stays, he goes, never entered into my mind. Um, it, it, it's not my issue to make policy decisions like that, it's not my issue to decide whether Steve Samasko should stay or go, or run or not run. I, it, it's not my issue. My issue is this statute.
Do you want to have Gary, would you like to pull this out, or have Gary review it again at all, or anything?
If, if Gary's certain, but, so, then we really had to adopt this?
Absolutely. I wouldn't have brought it here if you didn't have to.
And if we didn't adopt it, it would have been a violation of law?
Yeah, that's what, that's us, that's the definition of, of final average.
You know, that, that's, that's my concern, whether you call it a part-time employee or what. I mean, if you're, for whatever, part of your pension's based upon a salary of 85,000, and, and it should, the, his years of service times the multiplier, that's, that's, that's what the pension should be. But now that your work, whatever you're doing, but, you know, you're at a salary of 17,000 dollars, and should every one of those years now, uh, be based upon an 85,000 dollar salary? And that, to me, doesn't seem, you know.
Let me, let me put it to you a different way. Let's say Steve left the prosecutor's office four years ago, five years ago, whatever it is, and then this would count, and the years of service, the two have no connection. Uh, the, the continuing years of service, his issue was not how many years of service he had on this board. The issue was the timing tied into when he worked as a full-time employee. That's what would force him off the board, not as a matter of law, but just as an economic decision. And the question was, did that comply with the law or not? I looked at it. I looked at it, and I, it wasn't just me, I'm saying, well, okay, I got to be right on this. I asked Tammy, who's extremely knowledgeable on this stuff, frankly, more than me, but I asked her to look at this and consider it, and she said, I agree, we're violating his rights if we make him select years other than those that he has the right to select under the statute. And so, if it was just a matter of policy, saying, well, I think it'd be better if we did it the other way, so Steve could run for office again, you wouldn't have got this recommendation. For me, you would have had two options and an explanation of what those were, but that wasn't the conclusion I came to or she came to.
Well, that, that's important to me, because we resolved the issue of the two and the 2.4% multiplier, but we also need to, in my mind, understand that we don't have a choice about compensation.
Exactly.
That's being used.
And if there was a choice, it would not have come here for a technical correction to the ordinance.
And if we would have left that in place, that, that was not in compliance with the law?
Correct.
When it first came to me as questions from some people, and I began to look at it, I spent a lot of time, I've talked to every commissioner, talked to Commissioner Semasko, I talked to Bill, talked to the board chair, talked to Gary Fletcher, talked to HR, did a lot of research on my own, and pulled out a lot of these documents, and what I needed to make sure, I guess what I was trying to do was to make sure that I was comfortable with the vote that I had already cast, and I could say at this point that I am comfortable with that, because it was a point of law that needed to be straightened out, and our legal department straightened that out. Everything else that, that kind of fell into place, fell into place because of statutes that were there, laws that were there, ordinances that were there, it fell into place then. As long as what we have done and presented is done legally, and obviously above board, which it has been, according to our attorney and everybody else, that I'm satisfied then, that we have made the right decision, and that we made the right call on this.
Well, I got a couple of things. One, I'll just bring it up again, I think we're commissioners 24/7. I don't know, I think we've got a very good board. I think, we think about this stuff sometimes in our sleep. We make some decisions that a regular employee doesn't have to, we have a lot of responsibilities, so I don't take this as a part-time position. We might only be here part-time, but we serve this county 24/7, like Steve says. I get phone calls, and what we all do, so I could reiterate, keep going on that, but I think this is a 24/7 job. This issue needed to be addressed, and if you look at some of the things that we have addressed, all this did was protect his retirement, which legally it had to be protected anyways. So that's why this was done, but it's an issue that needed to be addressed, and we have addressed it. I just have one last thing, under 11.1, under our policy, for point of order, because Steve abstained to make this legal, and you're here tonight, do we need to have this up for re-vote because he abstained, because?
Let me address that, Dave. That night, I did say, and I don't know if it picked up on the mic, but I said, I'm abstaining because it affects my pension. Now, without, I did put that out there, and it was at a vote, it didn't say it was a vote, but no one objected, and it went through, so point of order or not, you can figure that out.
I just want to make sure that legally, that what we did, in fact, is legal, and if it doesn't need a re-vote, then we don't need one.
Steve, I think Carl, Commissioner Tomlin has pointed out, the procedures are kind of, are very clear. If you ask to abstain from a vote, you can only do that with a majority vote of the board. We didn't do that.
Correct.
So from that standpoint, we didn't, we didn't do what we were supposed to do.
I indicated I was abstaining because of the pension.
Yeah, you did, and you, that's, that's okay. We didn't do our job, which was to allow him to abstain, which was supposed to do that.
Let me respond to that, if I might. It doesn't make any difference, and let me tell you why, is if Mr. Semasko said, I need to abstain on this because it could impact my pension, and all of you voted and said, we don't agree, we're not going to let you abstain, he would still abstain, because it's a conflict of interest for him to do anything other than abstain. Now, what it might have done is, stating the obvious, is it might have generated some more discussion, you know, about, well, why, whether the details, whatever, and it's unfortunate that that part didn't occur, because frankly, we might have saved twenty-five minutes here talking about it, or whatever it's been.
More than that.
Oh, I, oh, I.
Well, all I want to do is that, if we're going to go forward, and if this gets filed or nothing else is done to it, it's a done deal, I don't want to be brought up later down the road like Obama's appointment in recess. So to our legal, I want to make sure we have it.
Don't bring Obama in this, please.
What we put in place is in place if we decide to leave it that way.
And I was actually in a meeting where that happened, person said, I need to abstain because of this and so, they voted, said no, person abstained. They felt they had a conflict of interest, and they weren't going to vote on it, no way. And my guess is, I can't speak for Mr. Semasko, but I don't think, no matter how that vote went, he still would abstain.
I was very sensitive for this entire issue, and still am, I've tried to do the right thing, and always will.
What do you want to do, David? Do you want to do?
Well, that's what I'd like.
We've kicked this thing around.
Why don't you get Mr. Fletcher's opinion on it?
I think we've heard.
You just got it.
Could, could I make one more comment? There's one part of this that I would also be very uncomfortable with, and that is, of us taking any action that would force a member to leave the commission. I mean, to me, that doesn't seem correct. I mean, the voters elect each of, each of us to our position, for us to take some sort of action that could force somebody to leave the board, you know, I would be opposed.
Well, I think you're getting on point of procedure. I mean, there was a vote, it was approved, it's a resolution, it's in order, there's a technical provision on some point of procedure, which quite frankly, we're a little rough around edges on our procedure sometimes anyway. Does that affect the legality of that resolution, Gary, in any way?
No. And honestly, whether, again, I don't mean to flog this to death, whether Steve had to leave the board, or didn't have to leave the board, was no consequence to me, because frankly, when he gets to the end of 2014, when he would have his full possible pension, if he wants to take the benefit of that and retire, he's got to leave anyways.
I understand that.
It was no consequence to me. The question here was, had we met the definition of final average compensation under that law, my opinion was no, Tammy Rumney's opinion was no, and so we corrected it. It's just that simple.
Well, let's, let's move on. Do we need to take any action to just, on this at all? Just move on to the next order.
Well, the only, it's on the agenda, if somebody wants to make a motion to take some action, that would be appropriate if somebody feels that they want to do that. If not, then.
I would make a motion just to accept the review of Resolution 12-47.
I have support.
I would like to abstain on that.
Do we have to vote?
Why do you want to abstain? I would like to abstain to avoid the appearance of any impropriety may result from my voting on that matter. That's why I'd like to abstain.
Okay, then, by rule of order, I'll ask both commissioners to allow any abstain or not.
Yes.
Is that an official, do I have to, is that an official motion?
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I guess I have to have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor.
All in favor, all in, Steve, to abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
One final question, if he's not an employee, does he still get paid for being a commissioner?
Go back to the first, first deal, as far as accepting the review.
Yeah, to accept the review.
Okay, do we, your motion, we have a first and a second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to new business. 7A, request for revision to Manning Tables of Day Treatment, Night Watch, and Juvenile Detention Center.
Do you want me? Let me, let me introduce this to you. As all of you know, many of our departments are undergoing a review of some of their staffing levels for part-timers to ensure that we are in compliance with the Affordable Care Act. It is requiring a number of those departments to reduce the hours of their part-time staff, and as a result, some of them need to add to their staffing levels in order to ensure that there is adequate coverage for the services that they're providing. The latest one that is in front of you is from the Day Treatment, Night Watch, and Juvenile Detention Facility. There is a memo here with a recommendation from staff as well, and if you have any questions, they're here in the audience to go through their request in detail.
Well, if we could, I believe, I may need a motion and forward this, and then we'll open up a discussion.
I'll make a motion, we send it on to the full board.
Second.
Okay, now any discussion? I have a few questions, just some gray areas, so if you would, please. Rather than have you go through the whole thing, I just got a few, and I, the way it was drafted and given to us, currently you're in juvenile detention, you have 26, you're proposing 46 employees?
The, this is additional part-time employees. The total employees we have at detention is somewhere around, I think, 40, I don't have the exact numbers.
One of the sentences here, it says, there are currently 26 part-time staff in place for my letter, and then it's requesting an additional 20, so I come with 46 part-time employees now.
Yes.
So that's correct what you're asking for.
Yes.
And then I was just going to say, how many total hours currently being worked, and how many total hours will now be required?
The total hours is probably going to be a wash. The problem at detention is, we're also under the parameters of a contract, and as part of that contract, we have a call-in procedure regarding seniority, and we are continuing to work on that. So we're trying to keep the hours the same, but we've staffed that building with the idea of part-time taking all the hours they can get, because it's cheaper for us. Now, with the Affordable Care Act coming into play, we can't do that, so we've got to add our backfill.
I'm sure you did your math, and no budget change, but additional 20 employees, I just want to ask that question. And then on the Day Treatment, Night Watch, you currently have eight, you're proposing another 12, but on that one, I believe that you have to have some training, because they have to be qualified, and my, let's see where I read that in here. There is no, these are, they won't have to go through any additional training?
Well, we train all.
They have to be qualified as supervisors or something, not, not, that's the correct word, but.
Right, we train all our staff. Once they're hired, whether they're part-time or full-time, they go through a, minimally a two-week training period.
I'm just concerned if potentially the hours be increased, because now you have to have somebody there qualified 100% of the time, you know, like a shift leader or something.
No, that won't come into play.
Okay.
No.
That was pretty much all I had. Does anybody else have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, all in favor of sending this to the full board?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, we'll move to 7B, Policy 312, Recruitment Policy. I have a motion.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board.
Second?
Support.
Any discussion?
Pretty straightforward.
Probably is, but I do have two questions. Let's see, make sure I understand it. Why the March Regular Board Agenda for Final Approval, rather than, in the letter it says March, why not February?
Sure, the board has a policy that policy amendments are first introduced to the Board of Commissioners, then there's a 30-day waiting period that enables department heads, supervisors to comment, propose any changes to the Board of Commissioners for you to then review.
The motion didn't specify which full board meeting, so is the motion fine the way it was presented? And the second? We had a motion to forward it to the full board, but didn't specify March rather than February.
No, that's fine, because it's, you can't have final action at this next meeting, so.
And then on the third page, right where it says page, "Part-time employee of Sinclair County Library reporting auxiliary tasks to regular employees," a page may work up to 22 and a half hours in a calendar week. I just want to know an explanation of that. What is a page, and why is it 22 and a half?
Actually, we have the library director here this evening, and I'm sure she can explain that much better than I can.
A page is an individual who works in the library specifically putting away materials in order of Dewey Decimal System or in alphabetical order. They make certain that the materials are on the shelf in order, so the patrons can access the materials. 22 and a half hours, we are trying to keep everyone below the 30 hours, and we're maintaining that 22 and a half for all our part-time individuals.
You made 22 and a half for all part-time employees?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of sending it to the full board?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. We'll move on to 7C, Policy Number 353, Expense Reimbursement Policy. I have a motion.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of sending it to the full board?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to 7D, Policy Number 322, Motor Pool and Driving Policy. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I have a question. Let's see. On page two, Roman numeral four, D, one of the changes is, this is for, for purposes of determining disqualifying violations, the county will consider only those offenses followed by conviction. Subject to review in a final decision by the county, the following circumstances will result in disqualification. And the D now says, conviction of more than one alcohol-related driving offense. What was the previous language?
I don't, yes, there, there was no language.
This hasn't been reduced from one to?
No.
There was no, there was nothing in there that clarified, this is an addition.
My, my concern is, if we have an employee that's going to be driving a county vehicle that has a conviction for alcohol-related driving offense, something has to be done. We can't just let the employee go back to work, because you could have somebody with a chronic alcoholism problem and go out and hurt somebody with our vehicle. And I, I don't know if you've reviewed this with our risk managers and the insurance company, but simply letting someone have a conviction of an alcohol-related offense and letting them continue to use county vehicles without any sort of intervention, doesn't make sense to me.
Usually, there's been court intervention. I mean, the conviction requires probation, screening assessment, alcohol therapy, I mean, that that is part of, and Secretary State is very hard on, you know, the driver with an offense like that.
Okay, I, I'm not familiar with that, but I, just, just the thought that.
Maybe the county should do something too, you're thinking.
Well, I, whether it's counseling or whatever, some sort of assessment, because if someone all of a sudden has a chronic alcohol problem that comes up here, and we let them drive, and they hurt somebody in our vehicle, I would think we have some responsibility.
Yeah, Howard?
I, I agree with Carl, I, you know, what's our liability here? I would like to know that, and I guess I defer to corporate counsel on that.
Well, if they're driving one of our vehicles, whether it's a first time, second time, or no time, it's, we're liable. And what most employers have a policy like this that prohibits it, if there's a conviction, usually not the first one, and even involving situations where it's an employee that has to have a license to do what they do for the employer. The issue becomes, obviously, if it's anything work-related, they're not going to be driving anything. So this is a, a matter of policy, obviously, the employer is going to assess every instance it becomes aware of, and maybe take more strict action, or stricter action, beyond what the policy requires, and we've done that before.
So this, this doesn't limit us from taking stricter action?
Yeah.
And Steve?
There's no, right now, there's no provision, if someone wants to use a motor pool vehicle, we do not look at their master driving record to see if they're reckless, careless, suspended, anything else, they can go, if they're a county employee, and they have a valid Michigan driver's license, or even, I don't even know if it required that, what's, maybe there's a policy or procedure we should put in place for people accessing motor pool vehicles, or at least check that.
And that's, and that's what this does. Prior to these changes. Prior to these changes, there was no pre-qualification process, there was no master list kept, there was no requirement that they show us that they have a driver's license. Now, that doesn't mean that that wasn't happening at the department level, but there was no adopted policy. The same with CDLs, random drug testing, the alcohol convictions, none of that was included in the policy prior to. This particular policy has been hashed over by the Fleet Maintenance, or, yes, the Fleet Steering Committee for, I'd probably say maybe about a year it's been talked about. It has gone back and forth to our risk managers. It has been looked at. We do have, the Sheriff Department sits on that committee, a number of the county board members sit on it. I don't happen to sit on it, so I can't really share with you the discussion that took place within those committee meetings. But if that's information you would like and if you'd like a little bit of background as to why that particular language came out, we can certainly provide that to you at the full board meeting.
You're at the committee meeting now that you're part of that, Fleet Services.
Yeah, I just found out that I'm responsible for this language now, huh?
As of January 1st, you're responsible for it.
24/7.
Yes. But over the past year, we have discussed this and Faye has done an excellent job getting information from various counties. And what this is, it's accumulation of our own input and other policies that are in effect in other counties. So this has been tried and proved in other counties.
And I think Commissioner Semasko makes a good point. I mean, if the court system is already going to take care of those concerns, if that's always in place, you know, that's fine. I just, the idea of someone getting convicted and then going back out and driving one of our vehicles and hurting somebody, I know we're always liable, but I have a situation in my family where someone was gravely injured in an automobile accident by a drunk driver and I'm very sensitive to those issues.
All right, so we have any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Dave, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
I'm not sure if it's a Ways and Means Matter where this fits in, but just for your own information, the St. Clair Blueways won a second award for their website. They've got two of them now and they're very proud of that. It's quite a model to be looked at. If you have never checked it out, take a look at Blue Way's website on the canoe kayak pass that they have. I think they currently have 19 of them and we're working on a 20th location down in Harson's Island area. But I just wanted to pay kudos to them for their website and for their two awards that they just won in the past few months. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, we'll move on to Information Only. You have a copy, which we always get, the MTA Capital Currents, and you also have a copy of the Strategic Federal Affairs. And we did meet with the new staff members and it looks like they're going to be a big plus for the county when I said it, and we've got some very talented people on it.
Make the motion to proceed to file it.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Who will we adjourn?
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.